This is Wilder, I pledge allegiance.
Okay, um, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the City of Romulus, City Council Regular Meeting for Monday, June first, two thousand and twenty. This meeting is being held electronically in accordance to Governor Whitmer's Executive Order two thousand and twenty dash forty-eight, Sections one A, which allows the meeting of a public body to be held electronically by telephone or videoconferencing in a manner in which both the general public and the members of the public body may participate by electronic means. Members of the public wishing to participate in this meeting may do so by dialing into the meeting or utilizing the Zoom meeting app. If dialing into the meeting, call one six four six five five eight eight six five six. Again, that number is six four six five five eight eight six five six. And when prompted, enter the meeting ID number eight eight two nine six four nine eight two one one, followed by the pound sign. Again, the meeting ID number is eight eight two nine six four nine eight two one one, followed by the pound sign. If using the Zoom meeting application, the meeting ID number is the same and no passwords if necessary. Members of the public may also participate by me- by email. Individuals can submit their questions and comments to publiccomment@romulusgov.com prior to the public comment section of the meeting. All citizens will be given an opportunity for their comments to be heard and/or read during the public comment portion of the meeting using the raise hand method. In addition, the council meeting agenda and package are also available on the city website at www.romulusgov.com. And at this time, we will have roll call. Councilwoman Abdo.
Here.
Councilman Barton.
Here.
Councilwoman Roscoe.
Here.
Councilwoman Tally.
Here.
Councilman Wadsworth.
Here.
Councilwoman Webb.
Here.
And Councilwoman Williams.
Present.
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam.
Tonight's ca- you're welcome. Tonight's council meeting agenda is as follows. Number one, agenda. Number two, minutes. Number three, petitioner. Number four, chairperson's report. Five, mayor's report. Six, clerk's report. Seven, treasurer's report. Eight, public comment. Nine, unfinished business. Ten, new business. Eleven, communication. And number twelve is adjournment. And a motion would be in order to accept the regular council meeting agenda as presented.
We need a motion.
Councilwoman Ro- Roscoe.
Make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
We need a second. Councilwoman Tally.
Yeah, I second that. Thank you.
It's been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Tally, for approval, as presented. Ms. Roscoe?
Yeah.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Abdo?
Yeah.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Next on the agenda are the approval of the minutes from the regular council meeting that was held on Tuesday, May twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty. Councilman Wadsworth.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I will, I will move, um, to accept the minutes of the, um, regular meeting of May the twenty-sixth of two thousand and twenty.
Councilwoman Abdo.
It's been motioned by Mr. Wadsworth, supported by Ms. Abdo, for approval of our minutes from the regular meeting which, which were held on Tuesday, May twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty. Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yeah.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you. There are no petitioners on the agenda. Number four is the chairperson's report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm just calling, uh, just to say that I know a lot of thing going on, and I can't speak today. And I am with the protest for justice. But I'm with it for people, no looting. Uh, and I know a lot of people are joining together so we can have justice. When we're- I have been receiving some calls that's telling me that elected officials should get involved. And I told them I would, and I'm sure my colleagues have the same sentiment about just America. So, but I, again, say that let's do it nonviolent, no looting. But that only hurts ourself for looting. And all for protesting. I like that. That's what justice are for. That concludes the chairperson's report.
Mr. Chair, under your report, I see a hand raised from Councilwoman Williams.
Ms. Williams?
Yes. I just wanted to, uh, say, uh, make a comment on what, um, the statement that you made, Councilman, uh, Barton.
Yes.
I think the, the, the issue, uh, or the situation that the council can take on is making sure that we have rules and regulations or rules and policies put in place to make sure that the residents or civilians or those that travel through our city is safe. You know, uh, getting involved in a protest like that, I mean, you know, we pray for those and, you know, we, we support them, but at a far, we are in a position to where we can make sure that our rules, our policies, and anything pertaining to our law enforcement, uh, uh, department is set in place and is above board to where there is justice. You know, we haven't had the type of issues that we see across the United States, but yet and still, it is our job to make sure that we have our policies and, and, um, the procedures and everything is put in place to where we don't have to face this type of, uh, situation. Thank you, Mr. Barton.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Mr. Chair, we have another hand raised from the mayor.
Okay. Mayor Berkoff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Council. Uh, just a quick comment on that, and I appreciate you bringing that up. Um, I, I think what I ask, and I guess the best thing that we can do is I need your help as a, as a legislative body, as administrative body, uh, the clerk, the treasurer, to work as one, uh, to, to make sure that we are, um, sending the right message and that we're on the same page. Um, I agree, there was a huge injustice done, uh, in another, uh, part of the country that we should, is wrong there, and it will be wrong here. So, I guess I ask and, uh, ask for you to pledge your support to work with us. Uh, I've asked the police chief and from chief on us, uh, to reach out to each of you, and if you have input or, uh, concerns for sure, or want information on how we can make sure that we're making our community a better community, uh, let's rally together. I mean, that's what I love about this community, so please, uh, help us as a community. If you can, uh, pledge your support to help, uh, help me help our community and our police department continue to be the best, I would appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Barton?
Yes.
We have another hand raised from Councilman Wadsworth.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Um, thank you, Mr. Barton. If I could, I totally, I totally agree with, uh, my colleagues, uh, Mrs. Williams and Mr. Barton and the mayor also, that, uh, justice is gonna have to prevail here and do protest in good faith and, and let's all get together on this one one issue.
Thank you, Mr. Wadsworth.
Councilman Barton, there are no more hands raised.
Okay, that concludes the chairperson's report.
Councilwoman Roscoe to accept the chairperson's report?
Just a second.
Uh, Councilwoman Webb?
I second the support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Webb, for approval of the chairperson's report. Ms. Roscoe?
Yeah.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth? Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo? Ms. Abdo? Chair votes yes, motion approved. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the mayor's report.
Good evening, City Council, uh, Treasurer, Clerk, and listening audience at home. Uh, first action item that I have is a request from Mary Drury, our DDA Director and Legal Counsel. Uh, what you have before you, uh, did already pass the, uh, Downtown Development Authority on May thirteenth, uh, and has funds available in the twenty twenty-one streetlighting expense account that's listed. The request is to concur with the administration and to authorize the mayor and the clerk to enter into the attached master agreement for municipal streetlighting with DTE, and that will be to remove eighteen existing light poles located on the west side of Hunt Street, on the park area, and to replace and install fifteen new thirty-nine watt LED acorn-style luminaries, as well as ten new thirty-nine watt LED acorn-style, uh, luminaries on the east side of Hunt. A total amount is ninety-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight, and no sense.
We need a motion from Council.
You have a motion?
Councilwoman Roscoe.
Ms. Roscoe?
I have a motion for the Hunt Street and Historical Park DTE contract.
Councilwoman Abdo?
Report.
It's been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Abdo, for Hunt Street Historical Park DTE contract. Any discussion?
We have one hand raised.
One hand, okay.
Sorry, Mr. Barton. Yes, yes, sir. We have, uh, Councilwoman Webb.
Ms. Webb?
Yes. To the chair, if I may, I just have one question for the mayor. I don't remember, and maybe he does. Did DTE install the current lighting there?
You know, I believe they did. They weren't of the LED type, uh, but I believe they did. Uh, and I also have Mary on the call. Can, can you confirm that, Mary?
Yes, I believe, um, I believe DTE did install those as well.
Okay.
Well, the, the only reason why I ask that question is, in the, um, contract, it stated if, you know, during the installation, that they ran into any unforeseen, uh, problems that we would be charged or more, and I was hoping that DTE did install those, then they would know what was underground.
Got you. Good question.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barton.
Mm-hmm.
Have a discussion. Hearing on roll call vote. Ms. Roscoe?
Yeah.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, City Council. Uh, my last item for action is a, a request to concur with the administration, and this would be to approve the reappointment of Deborah Hoffman to the Municipal Library Board. Uh, this is a three-year term, uh, that would expire April eleventh, uh, two thousand and twenty-three. She served on the board, done a great job, and this would be her reappointment.
We have two hands raised, uh, for these. Motion, Councilman Wadsworth?
Um, if I could, Mr. Chairman, I will, uh, move to, um, approve the appointment of Deborah Hoffman for the Municipal Library Board to serve from, from, to serve until the eleventh of April of two thousand and twenty-three.
Councilwoman Webb?
You should put that, Ms. Webb? Okay. It's been motioned by Mr. Wadsworth, supported by Ms. Webb, for the Municipal Library, Library Board, the appointment of Deborah Hoffman. Any discussion? There is no discussion, roll call vote. Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, City Council. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor.
Number six is the clerk's report. I have one action item, six A, for second reading and final adoption as Budget Amendment nineteen slash twenty dash eighteen for Public Safety Fund in the amount of forty-seven thousand dollars, five hundred and fifty dollars. This budget amendment was introduced at the council meeting held on Tuesday, May twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty. Councilwoman Abdo?
I'll make the motion for second reading and final production, uh, for Budget Amendment nineteen slash twenty dash eighteen Public Safety Fund in the amount of forty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars.
Councilwoman Webb?
Yes. I support this budget amendment, which was introduced at the council meeting held on Tuesday, May twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty.
It's been motioned by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Webb, for second reading, final adoption of Budget Amendment nineteen, uh, twenty dash eighteen Public Safety Fund. Any discussion? Do you have any more discussion? Roll call vote. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Wadsworth?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you. Before I close out my report, at the last council meeting, uh, Councilman Wadsworth, you had a couple of questions with regards to, um, what, uh, voters are gonna be voting on, on the ballot. So, I did receive a ballot proof. Uh, we do not have sample ballots yet, but I did get a, a ballot proof, and I can just give a, an, an update and a report to answer your questions with regards to what voters will be voting on, um, on August the fourth, the primary election. So, voters will be voting on, or what's on the ballot, um, are the congressional races, the Senate and the House, um, the legislative, uh, the legislative level will be the state representative. Uh, for the county, we'll have the, uh, prosecuting attorney, sheriff, the, uh, county clerk, also, um, the county treasurer, register of deeds, the county commissioner, eleventh district, um, and the precinct delegate also on the ballot. Two judicial, um, races, we have, uh, for the Third Circuit Court, as well as the Thirty-Fourth District Court, and there are two county proposals. One's an operating milage, uh, Proposition Zero, and Proposition P, a parks military renewal. So, those are the races that, uh, voters will be voting on August the fourth.
Thank you.
Um, you're welcome. And also, I know a lot of you have, uh, may have already received your, uh, absentee ballot application. We just want, uh, everyone to know that you might, some may have received two, one from our office, a postcard, and one from the state. Um, so either one you wanna turn in and sign. Uh, might wanna add that if you received it from the clerk's office, we have prepaid postage on our postcard. Um, we do have a drop box in front of City Hall, so we just wanna remind, you know, voters, you can email your, your absentee ballot application in, or you, again, mail it in, or you can use, uh, the drop box located in front of City Hall. The email address to email your absentee ballot application is elections@romulusgov.com. And with that, that will conclude the clerk's report.
Thank you, Madam.
Number seven is the treasurer's. You're welcome. Number seven is the treasurer's report.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, Clerk, and listening audience. I do not have any items on my agenda this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number eight is public comment. And this is the portion of the meeting for those members of the public wishing to address City Council. The raise hand method will be used to be identified. Those wishing to speak, you may press the star nine from your phone or use the raise hand icon from the meeting app. After you've been acknowledged, you will have three minutes to speak. Additional time will be upon the approval of the chairperson. Um, I do see a hand raised, Mr. Chair, from a member of the public.
Okay.
And, all right, at this time, I would like to acknowledge Tony Heimberger.
Good evening. To the chair, to the clerk, do we drop the absentee into the absentee box, or we're using the other one that the water don't go, so, so, I'm sorry?
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Heimberger, it was kinda hard to hear you. Can you say that, uh, repeat your question? Again, I, I apologize.
Yes. Are we using the absentee ballot box to drop the stuff in, or the other box? Cause I know at one time the absentee was closed off.
Okay. You're using the actual, um, absentee box, the stainless steel box. It's open, and we're checking it every day. Yes.
All right. That's what, that's what we wanted to know. All righty, thank you.
Okay. No, thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a comments?
I, I would like to, to make a comment. Um, I just wanted to let him know that if they are dropped in the black box, I, I am gathering them and giving them to the clerk's office. So, for anybody that's listening, um, I just wanna make sure that if it does go in the wrong box, it is being distributed to the clerk's office.
Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I don't see any other hands raised requesting to speak.
Okay. Uh, Madam Clerk, since there are no more hands, we'll close that part out.
Thank you. Um, number nine is unfinished business. Um, we have a hand raised, Mr. Chair, from Councilman Wadsworth.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Barton. Uh, this question is for, is for Mayor Berkoff, and it involves the Veterans Memorial by the Thirty-Fourth District Court. Mayor, I've got numerous calls, people are wondering when it's gonna go off, and is it gonna be as big and as, as good-looking as the one that we took down? I mean, I've got family members on it, you, you've got family members on it, and, uh, that's my, my concern and, and some, and some phone calls I got.
Sure. Uh, the attempt, there's a committee that's working on that. What I'm aware of is that there were funds budgeted with the court project. Uh, it is, uh, planned to be, uh, I thought started, uh, this summer yet, so I'll get an update, so I don't give out any inaccurate dates. Uh, I know they have a plan, they have a design, uh, and a location, and my impression from the committee is that it's gonna be, uh, better than ever. So, let me get all the details, I'll make sure all the electeds have that, uh, and give you an update.
Okay, because a lot of people, you know, have concerns that it's not gonna be made as big and as good-looking as it was for years there.
I'll, I'll try to get some kind of an idea of the, the style. That was what I was told, so, uh, I'll, I'll see what I can get from them and pass on. But our intention is to make sure that obviously we honor, uh, you know, the veterans and those loved ones, and just family members, people that bought works before. So, our intent is to, to definitely not lower, uh, the standards.
All right. That, that's my biggest concern, is they don't try to cut corners and down, and I'm downsizing. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, yeah, we have another hand raised under unfinished business, from Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes. Through, uh, through the chair, to the mayor. I would just like, uh, the mayor to, I have, uh, Mr. McRae, uh, to contact me because I'm on that committee, and I haven't heard anything, and I'm also getting calls, uh, concerning, uh, Veteran Memorial. So, if he can give me a call when, uh, we will be meeting again, that would really be appreciated.
Okay, will do. Thank you.
There are no more hands raised under unfinished business. Number nine, I'm sorry, number ten is new business. Number eleven is communication. Councilwoman Tally, and then Councilwoman Williams.
Ms. Tally?
Thanks, Mr. Barton. Um, yeah, I know my usual feel is about the census. I'm gonna take a break this week in light of everything we've been dealing with in our world on a national level. We need some prayer. So, I wanna extend, um, in concurrence to my colleagues who spoke earlier about the George Floyd incident that happened over this last several weeks or so, um, we need to pray. We need to definitely pray. And I wanna, uh, just do a shout out and thank our INM Chief, uh, Chief Police, um, Chief, who's, uh, sent the council a letter stating his position on this national matter, and there's Mitch been taken so far for our city around. I thank God for our city around this, and for staying strong, and we would just pray for our, uh, surrounding areas and cities and counties and states and the nation during this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tally. Ms. Williams?
Mr. Chair, the next hand, oh.
Yes. I would just like to, to speak on the situation with, uh, Mr., uh, Floyd. Uh, our police department, I mean, have really done their job, and I, I hear a lot of, of folks saying, you know, protest rally, protest rally, but what we need to come up with is a solution, because if we don't come up with a solution to solve the problem, we're gonna keep facing the same problem. So, what we need to do, even as elected officials, and I'm not saying that we can do it on, on our level, but from the local level to the state level to the federal level, we need to change the laws, because police officers are made to abide by the same laws that the residents, that the civilians are. And so, if we put in place laws, that the same laws that affect the civilians will affect the police officers that choose to do wrong, things will change. Laws is what's gonna change it. So, I think the most important thing is that people get out and vote, exercise their right to vote, to put people in that's willing to change the laws, that we don't have to keep repeating the same thing, because it doesn't make sense for us to be in office and not have any laws in place that can- that can prevent these type of actions toward absolutely anyone. Now, on, uh, another note, I have forgotten harvest. We took a break last week, but we will be at the high school tomorrow, June the second, at twelve noon, uh, giving away, you know, food for, uh, any other residents. All they need is their name and their zip code. Gleaners will be in the parking lot of the Old Corey School on the very next day, Wednesday, and to let the residents know, I'm working with Reverend Futch of the Mount Olive Baptist Church to bring the COVID-nineteen testing station. Uh, it should be next week or the week after. We'll definitely be giving an update and make sure that it's posted, that everyone will know. Uh, you don't need a doctor's excuse. You don't need, uh, no insurance. You know, it's for any, uh, Ramis resident, and even kids can come and be tested, uh. And we're also working on getting, uh, a mobile station for the two senior cent, uh, citizen buildings, because it makes no sense to wear the mask and wear the gloves, but yet still you don't know whether you have the virus. So we are bringing it to our city, that our residents have the benefit of being able to go locally and get tested and not have to drive all over town. Uh, thank you so much, uh, Chair.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair, we have two more hands raised. The first one is from our mayor, Mayor Burcraft, and the second one is from Councilman Wadsworth.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, I, the, the note that Councilwoman Tally mentioned, I can't echo enough about prayer. I just wanna remind, uh, a council, and we have our, our monthly community prayer coming up this Thursday, June fourth. If you want the dial-in, uh, conference call information, just contact, uh, my office. Uh, also, I know that, um, Councilwoman Tally sits on the ministerial alliance. If she could help fan that out to some of the other local ministers. Uh, you know, a lot of times the people come, and we, we cover different areas of prayer. I think everybody knows the area that we need to cover in prayer this month, and, uh, if you can't make the call, uh, please just pray from home, uh, and pray in your churches, and, uh, I can't ask you enough to do that, but if you are interested, let us know, and we'll provide the number and the code. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Wadsworth? Um, thank you, Mr. Barton. I'd just like to expand on what, on what Councilwoman Williams talked about getting tested. First of all, this should've been done two months ago, but that's in the past. My, uh, my wife and I went to Westland yesterday, and we got tested, and believe me, it don't hurt. It was a simple procedure. It took us like thirty minutes from the time that we got in line until we were done, and believe me, it's well worth it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wadsworth.
Uh, another hand is raised. Councilwoman Williams?
Well, just to, just to expand on what Council, uh, Councilman Wadsworth said, it, it's never too late, and it, it was a battle, uh, trying to get, uh, testing to come to our city. So it, it's never too late. Um, I'm just so glad we were able to get them to come here, that our residents don't have to leave, you know, from the city of Ramis, and they can come locally, which is right there at Beverly and, um, Wayne Road. So, um, you know, it's never too late.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. I'd like to, uh, I was listening to Governor tonight. She missed it a lot of, uh, stay-home things, but we can't, we can't let our guards down. We still have to be cautious of what we do, so we won't have a second round of this virus. I think that y'all, being just together, we can fight this thing, but we just can't go out freelancing and say, hey, everything is open. We do it in phases. We try to do it safely, and hopefully that, uh, this thing will be able to pass. Thank you.
Is there any more communication from council?
Any more communication?
Whoops, I do see another hand, Mr. Chair, uh, Councilwoman Webb.
Ms. Webb?
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk, and through the chair, if I may, I, uh, through the chair, if I may, in regards to the George Floyd, um, incident, um, you know, when the residents or our family members or anyone in-state or out-of-state called us, and as elected officials, if we don't know, we need to do some research in our history. Yes, run violent. I don't believe that this will happen in our city, but yet and still, we do have relatives who live in major inner cities. And my information is this. You talk with the parents, so that the parents will be able to instill in their children, the young people, what this is really about. It is not about you just wanting to get out and do whatever you wanna do. This is about making sure that we do have justice, but when we are out there, our children or our grandchildren are out there in the streets, we must obey the law of the land. There's, we have the right to protest, but if a mayor or a governor says there's a curfew, we need to inform our relatives or ourselves, as a matter of fact, obey that law. Go home, and then go back the next evening. Don't just hang out because you are breaking the law. This is about lives being taken from us. There's black lives, there's brown lives, there's white lives. So if we can just inform anyone who asks us in regards to the protesters, yes, we all have that right. Had it not been for Martin Luther King, we would not have that right. You see, what happens when he headed up, when things are organized? This is not about getting out there just being terribly angry. This is about pain. This is about hurt, because I have a son, I have a grandson, and so many of you have sons and children and daughters, of course. And I just wanted to, you know, just say that, because it's been on my heart. We have to inform people who called us as elected officials on how to go about this matter. Thank you so much.
Is there a motion? Is there, is there a motion for adjournment?
I'm muted. I'm sorry. I was muted. I see a couple of hands here, and I see Councilwoman Williams' hand. I don't know if this is, if she wanted to speak under communication or if she wanted to make a motion for adjournment.
Communication.
Okay.
Okay, Williams, yes.
Yeah. I just wanted to say, I, I really, it, it really touched my heart how the city of Detroit handled their protest. I mean, they really handled it in a really good manner. We, you know, they didn't end up with a lot of the damages that some of the other states, and some of the other cities in other states did. But I, I say in, you know, on the, um, comment that, uh, Councilwoman Webb, uh, Webb said, I'm saying my own name, uh, that we can encourage the young, we, we must encourage the young to follow the law, but at the same time, the issue is not gonna go away. It's gonna keep repeating itself, as I said earlier, that if we don't come together as elected officials, whether it be on the local, the state, or the federal level, and put laws in place, that it will prevent a lot of the officers, the bad officers that's committing these crimes. They have to be brought to justice just like anyone else. So if a police officer does something that they shouldn't be doing, taking someone's life, uh, doing any type of bodily harm, they should be charged as well as any other civilian. And until we get to that point, where we get laws in place to make that happen, this thing is gonna keep repeating itself. So I say, the young is watching us. They're looking at us. We're in a position to change things, and not just here on the local level, but also on the state and the federal level, and that's what we need to be encouraging all politicians to do. Put our heads together to come up with laws that we can prevent this.
Okay. If there's no more communication? Number twelve is adjournment, and the hands I see raised is Councilwoman Roscoe, and then Councilwoman Webb.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Support. It's been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Webb, for adjournment. Ms. Roscoe?
Yeah.
Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Chair votes, yes. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Goodbye.